Evening Harlem and Harlem's of the world. I'm Terry Wisdom. And this is Harlem Network News. And as many of you know, Harlem Network News, we started at the onset of COVID. And we are still here. We are dedicated to assuring that Harlem and the Harlem's of the world, and that includes a lot of the whole world are informed, engaged, and called to action. That is our mission. Today, I come to you with a heavy and a lifted heart. Yesterday on Memorial Day, iconically, we lost our congressman in the person of Charles B. Rangel, who was a congressman for our District 13, which incorporates some Central Harlem, East Harlem, the Bronx for forty-six years. He did a lot. He shared a lot. He enlightened us. And he was affectionately called the Lion of Lenox Avenue. And he was definitely that because he lived about half a block from Lenox Avenue. And he was right there. He was always on the street. He was a man of the people. So we've got to really look at that, reflect that, and we've got to move forward. I had the honor of a couple of years ago, doing an amazing interview with him as he talked about his life. So, and what he did, why he did it. And he was born in Harlem and he never left Harlem. That was not who he was. And he never left us in many, many, many ways. So we salute you, Lion of Lenox Avenue. Today, and he was a veteran, and for those that you don't know, I'm not gonna belabor the point, but it's black folks that actually started Memorial Day. So that's a whole nother story. We did a lot. We've started a lot. We are those people. So today, I have with us a very, very, very special guest. And that is in the person of Raymond Santana. And Raymond Santana is, I'm gonna let him speak for himself, but he is a candidate running for city council. He is a member of, quote, what was the Central Park Five and is the Exonerated Five. And it's just very, very significant that he is running for city council in his District Eight, which incorporates East Harlem, part of East Harlem where he grew up. So Raymond, I'm gonna pass the mic to you. I'm dropping the mic. And I just want you to share who's you are. You are and a little bit of your story and your background and what has led you to run for city council. And I make no assumptions. We're here to inform, engage, and call the community to action. So we're not making any assumptions that people know this or know that. We're here to make sure they do know. So thank you, Raymond. Thank you for joining us. So go right ahead, Raymond. It's your world.
Thank you. Thank you, Terry. Thank you for having me on. You know, like you stated earlier, you know, we celebrate the life of Charles Rangel, who not only was a pillar in our community, but early I stated he was the fabric. He was part of the fabric of Harlem, right? And it's honored that we get to stand in these forums and these spaces behind legends such as Charles Rangel or Bill Perkins, Alambay Braff, right? Brothers who have paved the way, right? Yeah, you know, you know how we, you know, we acknowledge these are brothers who have paved the way, who have put in the work. And so, you know, for me, looking at, you know, the passing of Rangel yesterday, it made me look at our leaders that we have currently, and it made me want to just hold on to them a little bit tighter. Right? It's the appreciation of the work that they do. And so, you know, so yesterday, that was Memorial Day for me, honoring, you know, some of the legends that we still have amongst us who are still putting in the work. You know, I'm Raymond Santana, one of the Exonerated Five. My history, you know, is extenuous when it comes to East Harlem and, you know, South Bronx. I'm born and raised in East Harlem, lived in the Bronx for a period of time in my life. Came back to East Harlem at a young age. And then, you know, and then I get arrested, you know, for a crime that I didn't commit. And ultimately, I'm charged, tried, and convicted along with four other brothers of the rape and the attempted murder of the Central Park Jogger in nineteen eighty-nine, that's April nineteenth. And so, for me, this community has been there. They watched us go through the trials. They supported our families. They watched us fight for, you know, we served the, you know, we served any, you know, from seven to, of course, we served fourteen years in prison. And so, you know, we were exonerated in two thousand and two. We filed a civil suit against the city in two thousand and three. And then we fought against the city for another eleven years, right? You know, and so, you know, ultimately, through the change of the mayor candidates and political figures, you know, we were able to get, you know, get a settlement in two thousand and fourteen. And so, and so for me, right, you know, now coming into this new, you know, this new, this new notoriety, because we've always been the Central Park Five. You know, when they see us comes out with Ava DuVernay and
Amazing.
Right? And catapults us to, you know, we become global, where people know the story now of the Exonerated Five. And so, you know, with us, we found that we had a platform. And so, once we found that we had the platform, we had to utilize that voice. And so, we became activists. We fought against the system, you know, for our children, right? We sponsored bills that, you know, that we pushed to record interrogations in its entirety so that the people can see what happened when a juvenile goes into those rooms with police officers, right? We sponsored bills also so that we can have outside agencies come in whenever juveniles arrested, right? To try to help in that process. So, you know, we did a lot of work when it came to juveniles fighting for the voices. And so, for me, I had a time where I had to sit down and I had to rest. I had to recoup. I was, I was, I was almost burnt out. I needed to recharge.
Of course.
Right? And so, in my recharging, you know, Yusuf runs for city council, right? And so, you know, I watch it from the sideline. I support him because, you know, he's my brother at the end of the day. And, you know, he's, you know, at the moment, he's still in the community helping out, trying to make a difference. And so, for me, as I watch from the sideline, you know, Yusuf represents District Nine, which is Central Harlem, right? I'm from the east. Yeah, I'm from the east side. So that's El Barrio. And so, for me, watching him in the, you know, in the battle, kind of start to recharge my battery, right? And then I start to look at my district. And I start to look at my district. And then I start to walk through my district. And then I start to see the conditions in my district, right? And then I go, okay, why does my district look like this? So now I gotta answer the questions of who is the current councilman in charge, right? Who, you know, what have they done, you know, to heal my district, right? Because as we know, like now, in East Harlem and the South Bronx, they're being called Zombie Land, right? Because for over twenty years, they have had a condition of mental health and drug addiction, right? And so, it's, and it's been visible. Everybody who lives in East Harlem and the South Bronx can see it. It's visible.
Yes, that is definitely, it's definitely visible. And I, this is Harlem Network News. I'm Terry Wisdom. And we are here with a candidate for city council, Raymond Santana, formerly of the Central Park Five, the Exonerated Five. And Raymond was just sharing a little bit of his story, but he's talking about the District, District Eight, that he is running for city council. And people are calling that district Zombie Land, as they are calling part of the South Bronx Zombie Land. So Raymond, if you could be just a bit more explicit, because we're, I mean, obviously, within your district, your constituents know what is happening on that east side. But if, you know, and other people, because we do have the Grand Central North Station that is right there on Park, you know, Park and One Twenty-Fifth. So there are people from the world that are seeing what's going on. But in your own words, can you share what is going on in, in, in East Harlem, in your district? Because it's very glaring. What is going on?
It's very glaring. It's, you know, you walk through, this is One Hundred Twenty-Fifth Street, right? We know how it looked back in the days. This was a place that had shopping area, path mark was on the corner. It was vibrant. You know, Christmas time, there were lights lit up to signify. It was a place where people wanted to walk through, congregate, and enjoy the scenery. As a young kid, I remember some of my friends, they had little, they had, they had young kids. We used to walk them through One Hundred Twenty-Fifth Street, because that's what it was like. And so now, when I looked at it and I seen the conditions, right? You see the homeless people on the corner. You have the needle exchange program around the corner on One Hundred Twenty-Sixth Street. People are passing out, falling out on the corner. There are people defecating on the corner. And for me, it blew my mind. Like, I walked by and a guy is actually defecating at the bus stop. And I'm sitting there and I'm like, this, this is, this has never looked like this. Never ever, right? And so, I mean, I have video footage of people overdosing on that corner. I have footage of people dying on that corner, where there's a white sheet being put over them. Now there's twenty-four hour police surveillance. I walk through there, the police officers wave at me. They say hello. And so, this is the condition. They see it. They're there, right? And so, for me, then I go, okay, so how long has this been going on? We know that this has been going on for over ten, twenty years.
Yeah. It's, it's extreme. And I think what you're saying, because, you know, just the memory of there being a path mark and that store being so vibrant and it was open, you know, late into the evening where you knew you'd go and shop.
Yes, you had a parking lot above it. You can park it there.
The prices were reasonable at that time. The motor vehicles was over there across the street. So a lot of things have changed, you know? It's a Harlem story. Because we also know that initially, the Abyssinian Baptist Church, they were the owners of Path Mark. And there are many things that happen for that not to be the case. But the other thing that is happening on this east side is that there are several new high-rise buildings that are being built. And I don't know, you probably have more of an insight into the affordability of these high-rises, because that's a dichotomy. You got people laying on the street. You got people shooting up. And then meanwhile, you have these like glass towers, which are probably in the range of the, you know, New York affordability, five thousand dollars for a studio. So how do you get that dichotomy? Where are we going? What is happening? Who's gonna, who's gonna be here? I mean, I think that's some of the dichotomy. We certainly know that there has to be good housing for people. But the question of affordability and the question of pushing out all the people and is this community a place where, you know, they're just hoping that all these people are gonna die out? I don't understand what's going on. So maybe
But that's the thing. If we look at it, if we look at it, right, first you devalue the land. And how you devalue the land is what you put, what's there? The drug addiction, the homelessness, the people running around, the chaotic behavior. It's a public safety issue now. Now people start complaining. They want more police over there. They want more stuff. But that becomes an issue. And then what happens is that it goes from One Hundred Twenty-Fifth Street, it spreads into East Harlem. It goes to One Sixteenth Street. It goes to One Tenth Street. Also, it goes to the South Bronx. It goes as far as One Hundred Forty-Ninth Street. And so, at the end of the day, when you look at that and you say, well, how did this get here? Who put this here? Somebody put it here. And then, when you see how long it's been in existence, over ten years, twenty years, that it has looked like this. And, you know, people will sit there and say, that's a lie. No, the people know. The people who lived there, the people who moved out because they got tired of seeing this type of stuff in their neighborhood and they got fed up. Some people left. We lost a big part of the Puerto Rican population in East Harlem because of these conditions, right? And so, at the end of the day, a lot of people have become fed up. They didn't see nothing being done. And they became immune to the vision. They saw it and they just dealt with it, those who stood here. And so, what happens is that now I go, wait a minute. So who's your current people in power and play? Who's your current councilman? They, and then you see Diana Yala, who's the current councilman, and has been here for two terms. And now she's at the end of her term. And I go, okay, so while you was in office, what did you do to clean that up? What did you do to come in and say, you know what, I'm gonna, I'm gonna rehab and give One Hundred Twenty-Fifth Street some love? But it's obviously that you didn't do anything because you did two terms and it still looks like that right now. So that's the proof. That's the
I hear you. I hear you.
And so now, here it is. I'm seeing these conditions in my neighborhood. And then I go to my dad. My dad lives on One Hundred Seventeenth Street. And I go see him and I say, hey, you know, I just saw a guy defecate at the bus stop. And he says, that's nothing. Come over here in the morning. They do it in the street.
Well, well. So we have a lot to contend with. This is our candidate, Raymond Santana, for District Eight in East Harlem. And we're just discussing some of the realities, some of the truth to power. And obviously, we live in a very complex world. One of the things that we do know for East Harlem, for Central Harlem, that we have more of the drug programs, the methadone programs, percentage-wise than anywhere else in the city. And a lot of the people that are coming in for these programs are not from our community. If you look at it, you would think, oh, half of Harlem, you know, is on drugs. But there are people that are coming from other communities. And I think that we're not saying that there doesn't need to be support, that there doesn't need to be help. But when you drop this on a community that is already struggling and we can't have the conversation without speaking about economics. Our comptroller, our current comptroller, and I thought he was misspeaking and I had to call and get the information. But the mean income for blacks in New York City is about nineteen thou, New York State, actually, is the state, is about nineteen thousand dollars. And the mean income for whites is two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So if you look at those numbers and those dynamics, it says a lot about what is going on. What I would ask you, Raymond Santana, is obviously, there are huge problems. There's huge bureaucracy. There's a lot of juggling. Coming in to the city council, how do you think that you're going to be able to make the change? I mean, obviously, speaking truth to power about it, recognizing it, but in cutting through the bureaucracy. And like you said, you had the, you've had the opportunity to sit and watch our council member, Dr. Yusuf Salam of District Nine, who has had some time and is time to even run again. You get two, two, two years now, I believe. So how do you, how do you hit the ground running and cut up some of this bureaucracy to actually make some changes in your district?
Before, before we get to the actual conditions and the problems, what we have to do is wake the people up. That's one. This is a district that has over a hundred and eighty-five thousand people in it. And this is, this is an election that brings up maybe five to ten thousand votes. So at the end of the day, there's a problem here. You know, blacks, blacks make up forty-two percent in the district, right? Where's that vote at? That vote has been silenced. You don't hear about that vote. So at the end of the day, it's about informing people. It's about getting people to register to vote. It's about getting people to get involved, getting people to understand what's going on in the community. The only way that this works, because at the end of the day, the role of a city council member is to represent the people. Is to be a voice of the people. But at the end of the day, if the people are not interested and they don't speak, there is no voice. So then, you know, and so what we see in East Harlem and the South Bronx is, you see the silence of the vote. At the end of the day, a lot of people are not participating. They're not doing their civil duty. And so, my job at the beginning is to awaken and to give them the awareness that they have to participate. If they don't participate, gentification will continue. You won't get the proper resources for education, right? You won't get jobs, stability. All you're gonna get is our seniors being pushed out. Because what happens is, like you said earlier, Terry, you know, these rents are gonna go up to five thousand at some point. And, you know, how do you reward and take care of our seniors who have given their time, right? Their investment into East Harlem. This is how we reward our seniors? By, 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 by pushing them out? The years that, my dad, my dad served in this community at Flower Hospital for forty-four years.
I hear you.
Been in this community his whole life, doesn't even want to leave. And so, at the end of the day, his reward is five thousand dollars a month at some point?
Yeah. It's, it's, it's unacceptable.
Unacceptable.
It's unacceptable. And
And it's continuing. The plan keeps continuing. There is no, I don't see, I don't hear, I don't hear, you know, these other candidates are sitting there. They have these, these policies and four-point plans on how I'm gonna get the job done. And you don't hear none of them talk about unification. You don't hear none of them say, let's bring the people together. You gotta unify. At the end of the day, you have to unify the people for the voice. That's the only way. We don't, we don't have all the answers. The people do.
No, I think it's, I think it's very important. And that is really why Harlem Network News, I'm committed to doing what we do in terms of just making people, once again, informed, engaged, and call to action. Because the regular mainstream media does not cover our stories for the most part. And so, and whatever, if they do, it may be a murder, somebody dropped the baby out the window, you know, or something of that nature. But just our human interest stories, our culture. You know, obviously, East Harlem has a very, very rich culture and history, you know, tied to Puerto Rico. Puerto Rico, that's a whole nother story. But, you know, East Harlem probably has one of the first and longest ethnic group, you know, in Harlem that has cultivated a very rich culture, which should be celebrated. People should be thriving. And as you said, people like your dad have been here and worked. And, you know, New York City and everything else is like built on people's back. So it's got to be the reward. And obviously, in such a time as this, with a Donald Trump in the presidency, a lot of different things are happening. We have a mayoral race that's coming up, you know? And media is very impactful because some of it is people often are not getting the clear picture. And if they do engage in the news, then they're hearing some soundbites. But gotta dig deeper. And like you said, it's about waking the people up. Because what I can see is that only seventeen percent of the people in New York City, not even in Harlem or East Harlem, have been voting. So it's like seventeen percent of the people are deciding what is gonna happen for everyone.
That's the point.
That's not a good thing. And then, I believe voter education, right now, we got ranked choice voting, you know, for the mayoral elections at least. And, you know, people don't necessarily understand it all. So we have a lot to contend with in terms of assuring people are informed. And a lot of people have just become so disenchanted because they see what it is. And they're seeing public officials that have not been able to take the bull by the horn and make a change. And most people are so overwhelmed with survival that they, you know, it's hard for them, but they need to, to get out there and get involved and get informed. So that's what we're facing. But a lot of what we're facing is disillusion and depression and homelessness. So how, how do you feel you're going to be able to bring hope to the people and engage them for change?
At the end of the day, it's the visibility. They gotta see. You gotta be in them streets. I've been out in the streets. I knock on doors. I've been, I've been in housing developments. People look at me, they go, what are you doing here? I mean, and that's the thing, when, when we go and we knock on doors and people are surprised, but then they have an appreciation that I am knocking on the door. That I am coming to bring a message. And so, for me, that's what, that's what the campaign has been about. It hasn't, it hasn't, you know, yeah, we're running for office and we want to be city council. But the meat and potatoes is to touch the people. It's to shake hands. It's to people say, hey, I know who you are. I know the story. I believe in you. Because what I'm, what I'm getting, what I'm, what I'm trying to give them is I need them to believe. I need them to have hope. And it only comes with me being transparent in this process, right? You know, we know that even Obama, when he was president, you know, he got pushed back on a lot of things. He tried to put forth for the people.
Absolutely.
But as long as he was transparent in that process and people understood when the Republicans were ganging up against him and pushing his bills back and then his law. And so, you know, it's the effort. People will understand the effort if it's given genuinely. And that's the point for me, that I come in, I just give it genuine. I'm trying to really help genuinely. I don't, I'm not here, you know? I don't, I don't, you know, I mean, I could, you know, I could be down, down in Georgia. I could be somewhere else, living my life, right? The fact that I'm here and I'm trying to put the work in, because once I knew better and once I saw and I figured out what was going on, you can't sit on that and not do nothing, right? I, 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 you know, the, 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 the judge in our case said, hey, if four guys do a robbery and they run in the bank, the one who sent in the car is just as guilty as the ones who did. And so, that, I held the same principle. If I know that my, my, there's a, there's a disvalue, there's a, there's a disservice that's being done to my community. And then I find out and I figure it out. And then I have the power to step in and do some change. If I don't do it, I'm just as bad as those who are doing.
Thank you. Thank you. And, and the work is hard. I'm Terry Wisdom. This is Harlem Network News. And I'm here with candidate for city council, Raymond Santana. And thank you, Raymond, for taking this challenge to run for office. It's not easy. And we also thank you for turning a bad situation into good. You know, for taking up the mantle, you know, what you went through as a child, fourteen. You know, I think about it. My youngest grandson is fourteen right now. And I, I look at him, you know, he's evolving. But for you at fourteen to experience that of, you know, just being arrested, going into the jail system, you know, a question of freedom. I remember reading a book about another young man who was in that system and growing up in there. For you to come out, for you to stand up, and then for you just to decide that you wanna do stuff to help others, you know, justice, both for the wrongfully incarcerated and for the incarcerated. Because one of the things that we know, and we haven't even touched on this, we're talking about in your district, in all of our districts, in our lives, we have not really touched on the fact that more of our young people are incarcerated than others. We're part of that prison industrial complex. That's a real factor. More of the whole gunshot thing impacts us, is police killing us, and then it's us killing us, you know? So we've got all of that to go on in terms of the crime situation. We have a lot to go on. But
A hundred percent.
Yeah, yeah. So just the fact that you have decided to turn, and I'll quote, I, I had someone on who's actually one of, is Alambay Braff's daughter, Anne Amber. And she has an organization in Georgia, which is with domestic, domestic violence. And I believe the name of her organization or slogan is And I believe the name of her organization or slogan is Turning Pain Into Purpose. So I see you about turning that pain into purpose. As Ms. Salam, the mother of Yusef, Justice for the, you know, it's, it's going through this and to be able to come out of it and then decide that you're going to take that. And we know that we saw one another at the amazing tribute, the hundredth birthday of El Hajj Malik Al Shabazz, Malcolm X, at Shabazz Center. Once again, a Dr. Betty Shabazz took that pain and took that, you know, made it into purpose, the Shabazz Center. So this is what we, as a people, have to do. We've got to be about institution building and the other connection that we had. And I still keep that a lot in our, in my heart, is the fact that we were able for two years to work collectively through the community board, ten, and all the community boards to get the gate of the exonerated, which is right there in Central Park at one ten. You know, with different displays in the park building there. So it's a powerful thing. And that was a, a, I guess, you know, a great moment in time because we were able to do that.
The gate symbolizes so much. You know, it symbolizes the healing of a community. It symbolizes the connection of a community, of its people. You know, even, even Central Park, right? That, that it can have the history of Sianica Village and stuff like that. And then come back and say, you know what? That is a wrong, but we can do some type of right from here going forward with the, with the example, with the gate of the exonerated, right? Because there hasn't been the naming of a gate, I believe, in over a hundred and fifty years.
Yeah, a hundred and fifty years. So it's, it's very, very, um, there's a lot of significant things. New York City is an incredible city. We have so many different ethnicities here. Obviously, we have been hit real hard. Um, we're gonna wind down because I know you, you're, you got a lot going on right now, um, the interviews and everything. But, you know, your district also has another African burial ground. That's starting to come to the forefront. Uh, the Bus Depot over there on Second Avenue is built over it. There is so much to, you know, to come to. And I think your district is also one of the most dynamic, the co- you know, where things are happening and they're happening fast, you know, in terms of, you know, skyscrapers, building, this, that. So there's a war going on for the people.
Yeah, well, there's the war going, I'm, well, I, I'm not even gonna say there's a war going on for the people. There's a war going off of that space. There's a war going on for the community. At the end of the day, I mean, here it is that, we, you know, we're going through the petition process. And, and one of the other candidates in this race, Raffael Lopez, who was backed by a super PAC. The super PAC puts up one point six million dollars to back him. They fund his full campaign. And what they do, they take all of us to court. And they take the court on trumped up frivolous charges. And what happens is that what now, instead of my campaign funds going to my campaign, they have to go to an attorney because he has to go to a hearing. So now the attorney sits in the hearing and he proves that we did nothing wrong and we, we cleared the charges. And what happens, Raffael Lopez's camp files an appeal. And so now we beat him on the appeal. And what do they do? They filed a second appeal. And so now, all they doing to, and they didn't just file it against me, they filed it to all the candidates. But what they did was they depleted our campaign funds, right? And so now I go, so this, they, you know, and I say, is this right? And everybody looks and they say, what is politics? And I say, no, 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 no. This isn't politics. Because at the end of the day, the role of a politician is to represent the people. And you, and if you're calling a politician, you know, these names, then what does that say about the people if he's the representation? No, there has to be more pride. There has to be more, you know, ethics in, in this process. So now I go, how do we support some, how does somebody support somebody like Raffael Lopez? Who has a super PAC that's trying to, that's trying to buy our community?
It happens. And, you know, in, in such a time as this, we have to be aware. We have to understand. And I'm very careful with my language. Usually say public official. That's my word, you know, because that's politics. I say public official out of respect because there's so much going on. But once again, it's really important that the community understand, the voters understand what's going on and the forces against us. So I would like you to just let people know how they can reach you, how they can help you. Obviously, in this vote, only the people in your district can actually vote for you.
At the end of the day, I need the people in the district to vote for me. I need the people in the surrounding districts to support the people in the district. This isn't, this is bigger than East Harlem. I'm fighting two entities in East Harlem. I'm fighting the entity of the super PAC and I'm fighting the entity of the, of, of the current structure that's in East Harlem that isn't working. That wants to continue the same process that you're going through right now. And so at the end of the day, all it is that's between them is me. And it's me against them. And that's why I asked the people to back me because without me, without the people, there is no me. And, and if I don't get in office, then it's gonna be business as usual.
Okay, okay, I hear you. Well, for whatever, that would never, uh, on your campaign. How can folks get in touch with you? Um, I don't know the rules. But, you know, how can people help your campaign financing? Like I said, I don't know how all of that is structured. But what do you, what do you need to move forward? And also, how are the numbers looking? Do you know how everything is looking at this point? You know, what, what are you seeing out there?
Well, we're seeing a lot of positivity. A lot of people showing support. A lot of people starting to unify. A lot of people in other districts have reached out. People in other boroughs have reached out to show support. Uh, unification is happening and, and we haven't even gotten to the primary yet. So, so the work is being done. Those who wanna help, you can volunteer, you can donate. The website is raymansantanaforNYC.com. Um, sign up. There's newsletters, see what we're doing during the campaign. And at the end of the day, we ask for all hands on deck because that's what it's called for. This is a call for the people. This is a rally for the people, a unification of the people. Because this time that that the voices be heard. It's time that those who are suffering, they, they get a chance to be heard and they get a chance to, that, i- i- it's only right. We take care of them.
Okay, okay. Well, thank you, Raymond Santana. And we thank you for taking up that mantle. We thank you for taking up the torch. We here at Harlem Network News, we, we wish you well. We're here for change, for this community. We're here for economic change. We're here for support of small business. We at Harlem Network News are, are tired of the business as usual. We're here for our black media, our ethnic media to be supported so that we can get the news out to the people. We're here for change, for the education in our schools. Because in Central Harlem and in East Harlem, and we didn't even touch on that because that would be a whole nother conversation. But the schools in our district are right now ninety nine point nine nine percent black, you know, Hispanic, you know, a sprinkling, Arab, Asian. There are no white kids in our schools. You know, though white people are living here in our public schools, even in our charter schools, they're not there. And the fact that I'm mentioning that is because from my lens, which I look, I'm, I'm all through these schools. As you're in these streets, I'm in these schools. What I'm seeing is that we're getting a separate but not equal education. Yeah, we're getting separate but not equal. And that, that, that was, that law was passed, you know, what, over fifty years ago. But this is what we have right now. And that is a frightening thing. So that is something that we also have to turn the tables on because these children are definitely our future.
A hundred percent. Education, education is a must. That's, that's after affordable, after my affordable housing, there's education. Because the education is, is the investment into our future, is the investment to our children. So we have to take an interest there. We've been so busy with, with mental health and, 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 and drug addiction that we can't even get to affordability and, and our children. And then we got the seniors behind them. East Harlem and the South Bronx has been so occupied with the drug addiction and the mental health that we can't even get to the other points, which is affordability, which is our children getting a better education and which is our seniors making sure that they, that they stay in their districts and they're not priced out.
And all those things are intertwined because, you know, many of our children are in shelters. Many of our children are in foster care, you know. And this is all due to a lot of the problems. And not to mention, we didn't even touch on that because we gotta go. But, you know, the, I guess, quote migraine or asylum, you know, all of that situation. Our community has been flooded with that, you know. And that's a whole nother situation. That's not saying anything against anybody. But it's like when thousands of, you know, of people are plopped into New York City in an already stressed district. And New York City is having to take its budget and federal government not helping to help, because it's the law, to help to take care of these people. And then it's a situation which, you know, everybody practically in New York City, especially in Harlem, you know, families came from other places, you know. So it's a, it's a very, very touchy situation, but it's even touchier in education. Because I know for a fact that people that are in the hotels in Thirtieth Street, they're busing them to Harlem to go to school. You know, with no real services for language for them. So we got a lot to contend with. So you got a big job. So.
It's a divisional tactic. You dropped, you dropped the migrants there and then you, you drop them on the people that's already disgruntled and they're already upset because they're not getting the resources. And now the resources they are given has to be divided because now you gotta share with the population. And now what happens that causes division, that causes friction, right? And there's somebody like Trump who wants to run. He says, I'm gonna get rid of all the illegals. And there goes the vote. It, it's tactics that are being done to our people on the, there on a regular basis.
So wake up, wake up, wake up and
And that's why we need people to wake up.
Okay, so on that note, I'll just quote and we'll end and I'm sure we're gonna talk again. Thank you for standing up. Thank you for taking that leap. Thank you for, quote, taking that pain and moving it to purpose. You know, thank you all for the example that you continue to to push. Thank you for leading by example. And as our great James Baldwin said, so goes Harlem. And, and that's real. That's what that is. So we're still here and we're not going anywhere.
That's right.
I say that as we continue to salute and look at our Congressman Charles B. Wrangle, may he rest in peace
Be rested.
And power. So thank you very much, Harlem Network News. You can reach us directly if you've got stories or you need to come on and share something that's going on in the community. We're at six four six two six one five three nine seven. You can subscribe to our YouTube channel and harlemnetworknews@gmail.com and, you know, donate or serve or whatever it is that you can do to keep us going. Because we are the voice of the people, okay? So, thank you so much, Raymond. Thanks for taking the and keep us posted as to how the campaign is moving.
Definitely will do.
Okay, I know you're a believer.